Order the Monday, July 6th, 2020 Regular Meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Mayor Protam Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hennan?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve, Your Honor, with one amendment?
Okay.
And the amendment is to remove item number three from the regular agenda and move the remaining items up one, uh, one position. Uh, the Downtown Development Authority would like to take on a little bit more time to review and tweak a few more things before coming to us with this material.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
Motion was made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protam Dean. And the motion is to approve tonight's agenda with probably change deleting the amendment bylaws in the Downtown Development Authority and moving every other item up one. Ms. Mitchell, do you have that?
I do, thank you.
Okay, are there any other changes or additions to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on the agenda as amended?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let's pray. Good and loving God, as we celebrated the freedoms of our nation this past weekend in somewhat more braided ways than we are used to, we are thankful for the ultimate freedom that's found only in You. We lift our prayers for those who are suffering economically, in need of work, and for those who are suffering mentally and emotionally as depression rears its real and ugly head. We lift our prayers for those who are stressed and anxious in these uncertain times, and for our sisters and brothers of color who live with a fear and weight that some of us will never know. God, we pray for unjust systems and power structures to fall, for hope, joy, and peace to prevail, and that You would be with our city council members and mayor this night. Grant them wisdom and discernment to govern well. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have now reached public comments for items that are included on tonight's agenda. So you may present your thoughts on issues that are included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please email theclerksoffice@clerk@berkleymich.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand or dial in at 1312-626-6799. Again, that's 1312-626-6799. And you will be recognized either by name or phone number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence, and remember you will be limited to three minutes, and then you will be muted after that.
We do have one hand raised. All right, Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, and then you have three minutes once I unmute.
Right, thanks, Tori. Uh, so hello, everyone, my name is Chris Copasha, I am a lifelong resident of Berkeley, Michigan. I just wanted to comment on tonight's agenda and show my support for Resolution Number R-2620, a matter of approving the resolution to expand voting and registration access. A really important thing for me, I am also a volunteer, and I want to give full transparency, I am also a volunteer of Voters Not Politicians. Uh, really love to see that our city is even considering expanding on voting, and I would really love to see the support of the city council and the mayor on this. Um, I think it's so important to think about this in a future, when you're looking at the future. For instance, you know, obviously, right now, many people will take advantage of absentee ballots, but what the hope is, is that in the future, we find, we'll find many more voters that want to obtain access to absentee voting and want to obtain access to voting in general. And I think it's so important that we pave that way and make it as accessible as we can to all of our residents, including people that may work numerous jobs and may find it very difficult to access our city clerk's office. And I also want to really, you know, sing a little bit of praise, Victoria, I've had a great conversation with Ms. Mitchell, and she's just been so informative with how she plans to proceed and how she's viewing things through. And I have no doubt that she has the utmost commitment to expanding voting access to our residents. And so I would really love to see the support of this. I think, um, you know, we do live in a community where people may have different factors in their lives, and I think, you know, expanding ours and offering other opportunities could really make a big difference for a number of people. And with that as well, I think it's important that we, you know, as we, as we move forward and as things get back to normal, I think it's so important that we evaluate this and look at it and say, you know, how did this work in, you know, normal times when we're not facing a pandemic where everybody's quite concerned about their health, right? I think as we move forward, looking at it and saying, okay, is this working for the people of Berkeley? Um, evaluating it through that lens and getting, you know, public opinion on that would definitely be extremely beneficial. So with that, I just want to say, you know, thank you for considering it, and I hope you all will support it. Uh, I think it's super important, and I think Ann Arbor has adopted a similar resolution. So they're one of the leaders in this, and I think it's great that we're potentially going to be another leader in this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, oh, we have another hand raised by Mark Richardson. Mark, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you, when I do that, you have three minutes to speak. If I can unmute you. There you go. Yep, there he is.
Okay, um, thank you, Mark Richardson, Berkeley, Michigan. Uh, I want to just comment on the first item on your agenda, the presentation on green infrastructure. Um, stormwater retention is a big issue, not only Berkeley, but in Southeast Oakland County. Um, this is an exciting project, I'm proud to say the Environmental Committee had something to do with getting this project off the ground. I would urge the council to, um, look at this as a, in the spirit of, um, of a pilot project or, uh, you know, a demonstration project, and to look at, um, some of the locations that Dr. Carpenter has identified as, uh, as high-profile locations that, uh, if they were to, if we were to do a project at those locations, it would, uh, really spruce up the town and, um, and provide a, uh, yet another positive message about Berkeley. Um, so I'm looking forward to Dr., actually, it's Chris's presentation, I guess, but, uh, reflects Dr. Carpenter's work, and, um, I'm hoping the council will take, uh, take it to heart. And, uh, we're probably not in a position to do, um, all of these, uh, all of these proposals at the same time. I, but, uh, we should think about, uh, which one might be the most advantageous to get started with. And certainly, it's going to, um, it's going to not only benefit our image, but, uh, you know, serve as a example of progressive stormwater detention, something that we're all interested in. So, uh, thanks very much for putting this on the agenda, and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I am not seeing any hands raised, um, or virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay. Uh, seeing no additional hands raised or virtual hands being raised, we are joined this evening by Senator, State Senator Mallory McMorro. And before we close the public comment section, I am gonna welcome Senator McMorro.
Hi, everybody, uh, thank you so much for having me in the spirit of abiding by the rules. Mallory McMorro, Royal Oak, Michigan, but don't hold that against me. Uh, I'm gonna run through, there've been a lot of updates, so I'm gonna run through kind of the top five of what we shared in the past week, but want to make sure there's some time for questions. Uh, so starting off, Michigan's new auto insurance law went into effect on July 1st. Uh, so that means that moving forward, any resident has the option now to choose their level of PIP coverage. Uh, you can keep the unlimited option, or you can move down to a number of tiers depending on the health insurance, uh, coverage that you have. One thing that I do encourage all residents to do is to do some research, really understand what your health coverage covers before you decide to make an option to lower your auto no-fault. Uh, we've seen some really devastating stories of people who, uh, didn't have health coverage or didn't have auto no-fault and have had, you know, lifetime, uh, accidents and, and didn't have those covered. So would encourage you to do that. Also, one thing to note, in the law, uh, there are guaranteed rate savings, but it is only based on the statewide average, and it's only based on your PIP line item. So it sounds like, you know, if you read news headlines, you might see 30, 40% savings. Again, make sure you know kind of where you're at based on the state average, do some research. And again, that's just off of the PIP line item, it's not off of your total bill. Uh, so a lot to dig into, choice is always really exciting, but just make sure you do all the research, call an agent. Uh, and if you want a primer, uh, the state of Michigan set up a new website just for that, which is michigan.gov/autoinsurance, which will give you a ton of resources on where to start there. Um, number two, uh, just a note to all residents that licenses, state IDs, and vehicle registrations, the deadline for renewal, if yours expired between February and July 1st, is now September 30th. Uh, so we know Secretary of State's offices have reopened, but as you can imagine, there is a backlog. We've heard from people that it's difficult to get an appointment anytime soon, but you've got until September 30th. Um, I would recommend making an appointment, sorry, there was a dog, uh, it sounds like jumping through a gate in the background. Uh, but recommend making an appointment, and something that's new within the past year is that each Secretary of State location, there's a certain number of appointments that are reserved for day of. So if you don't see one in the near future, just check in every now and then, and there are some, I, I had to get my license renewed and was able to get one the next day and get in and out in a few minutes, and it was pretty painless. Um, next thing, the governor signed the $880 million bipartisan COVID relief funding bill. Uh, the first question people ask is, I thought that we were in a recession, where does this money come from? Uh, so we're not cutting from anywhere, this is 880 million out of the $3.2 billion that the state received from the federal government. So we appropriated that funding, which includes things like $2 an hour pay increase for direct care workers, 125 million to reduce the cost of childcare for families that are going back to work, uh, 200 million for local governments, that's very important. Uh, I know everybody working in municipal government knows that the first round of the CARES Act didn't really trickle its way down to local governments, so that's in there that we've appropriated for all of you. There's 100 million in small business grants, and for anybody looking on how to access those, you can go to the MEDC website and learn more about that. Uh, 18 million for health and safety grants for schools, and this is really important and something that I pushed for very hard. Uh, 14 million for food banks and domestic violence shelters. We heard some really devastating stories, especially during the shutdown, of people who were in dangerous situations at home. Um, and because of the shutdown, uh, we're unable to kind of get out of those situations. So we want to make sure that, uh, local domestic violence shelters are, are well-funded and can take care of people who, um, very much need the help. And there's an additional $29 million for UIA staffing for the next six months, that will bring on hundreds more staff for the UIA, uh, along with, uh, computers and phone lines to help clear that backlog. This is something our office has helped over 300 constituents work through unemployment claims so far. Uh, we know that for the few who are remaining, that doesn't mean much, and trust me, we are as frustrated as many people are who are still waiting for some of those benefits. So I hope this goes into effect, the governor did sign this, as soon as possible, get people in there and work through that backlog. Uh, to date, the state has fulfilled about 95% of all claimants in UIA, um, which is good. We're actually leading the country in the percentage of claims that have been paid out. But again, I know that doesn't mean a whole lot to those who are still waiting, who are stuck, who may have some, uh, additional verification that they need to make, or if their account was flagged for fraud when we were hit with a fraud attack in the state. Um, so that is there. If somebody does need help with a claim, we are able to, as a legislative office, file a support request on their behalf and advocate for constituents, so we encourage people to contact our office, um, if they are still stuck. Uh, on other financial news, the legislature and the governor reached a deal for the budget for fiscal year 1920, uh, to pull some of the additional federal funds to really solidify our budget for the year. Uh, one thing that I think is important is that there's an additional $256 million in net funds for K-12 schools, knowing that going back to school in the fall, uh, is a top priority, but that there are going to be costs incurred to make sure that staff are safe, that students are safe, that there's adequate PPE and, um, sanitary stations and all those sorts of things. So that's in there as well, um, and there's additional municipal funds in that deal as well. So there are some cuts to, um, government spending, there's some money that is gonna have to be moved around. But again, just want to be very clear, this is for fiscal year 1920, this is not for October, the deadline that we have coming up. So we are gonna have to come together, um, and have some really tough conversations about what is a priority for our budget. I've mentioned to many people on this call, my priority is K-12 schools, local municipal funding, we have to get our basics right, and infrastructure. We cannot allow our infrastructure to continue to crumble, uh, beyond what it was. So that's my focus, is making sure we get our basics right, um, and go from there. And we'll continue to push our federal colleagues for an additional relief funding bill, um, with hopefully more flexibility for states to use those funds as needed and not necessarily beat earmarked to new COVID-related expenses, which is what the CARES Act, um, limited us to do. Uh, finally, this was really big, the governor and the Return to Learn Task Force released their, uh, school reopening roadmap for the fall. The priority is in-person education, and there's a 63-page report, uh, that we have available on our website and our Facebook page, if you want to read it. It's very thorough, it's very well done, uh, there were representatives from superintendents, teachers at all levels, parents, special education experts. Uh, and the priority is in-person education versus, you know, more virtual learning or staggered class schedules. Um, so take a look at that, one thing that I think is really important is that in-person learning is feasible at Phase 4 of reopening, which is what our, uh, area is currently in. So school districts based on this have to develop three plans of their own. One for Phase 4, based on these guidelines, one for Phase 5, if hopefully we can really control the spread of COVID-19 and move forward. Um, and one, you know, worst-case scenario, if we do see the spread tick up, as it has, uh, in other states, you know, it's very concerning as we look to states like Arizona, Texas, and Florida. Michigan is still doing well, um, but I think it's a warning sign to make sure we really keep this thing under control, especially if we're thinking about kids and families in the fall. Uh, so that's something that school districts have to put together as well, based on those guidelines, and present it out to the state. So I'm in conversation with all of our schools, um, about this, and we'll be sharing updates when we hear more. Um, one other thing that I do want to share that our office worked on pretty significantly, uh, that did pass into law, was encouraging cocktails-to-go in social districts to allow for our restaurants and bars to include mixed drinks, uh, in their offerings of beer and wine-to-go, and also giving local municipalities more flexibility on shutting down streets, using public spaces to create kind of social districts that you can get outside. Uh, we saw, obviously, with Harpers, uh, in East Lansing, which, where there's now over 150 cases of COVID that are traced back to one night out at the bar. We had, uh, a similar, though much smaller outbreak at Fifth Avenue and Royal Oak. Uh, and as we've seen around the country, you know, indoor bar service, when you just think about the business model, you're encouraging people to congregate, you're encouraging people to dance, there's a lot of close talking and yelling and singing face-to-face. It is probably the riskiest scenario for the spread of COVID. So, uh, the governor announced that indoor service for bars and clubs, anybody who makes more than 70% of their revenue off of alcohol sales, had to close, uh, but we hoped that the addition of cocktails-to-go in social districts would really take the heat off of what restaurants and bars are already feeling. And I've seen, um, some of my favorites like Berkeley Common take advantage and get creative with tacos and tiki drinks outside, which is exciting. Uh, so with that, I want to leave it open to if there are any questions, and I do want to encourage everybody, uh, we have been doing nearly weekly virtual coffee hours since COVID broke out, uh, they tend to be on Fridays. They are very well-attended, so at a normal coffee hour in the before times, as I like to call it, we would get, you know, about a dozen people who would come out to our in-person coffee hours. We had a virtual coffee hour with 800 people, uh, who showed up. So these have become very, very popular, so please come, uh, we go through a ton of stuff, keep you updated, and then thank you to those who have, uh, participated in our mayors and city managers' calls that we're trying to do about once a month, uh, they're very helpful for us as well. And with that, I'll open it to any questions.
Thank you, Senator, for being with us this evening and giving us that update. Uh, perhaps next time we have this meeting, we will all have virtual, not virtual, we'll have cocktails, from some of those establishments, fine establishments in the city of Berkeley. Um, I want to thank your office, as you mentioned, for not only the, the coffee hours, but the communication with the mayors and with city managers, um, you know, especially early on, I know they were extremely well-attended, and we all had similar priorities, which you mentioned are the top priorities. So it's safety, certainly the schools, um, and for us, making sure that our infrastructure is not, uh, the thing that gets kicked down the road so that we can continue to provide the high-level services that we provide here in the city of Berkeley. Um, and, and the questions, as we went through our budget, I know our budget process a couple months back, that was a top question and concern for this council as well, so I thank you for your continued work at the state level. The reality is that state level, there's, there's only so much to, to go around, and with all of the CVTs that we have in, in the state of Michigan, um, it's incredibly difficult for the state alone to provide that support. Um, so we need to continue, obviously, working with federal governments, uh, to make sure that when those budget hearings roll around next year, um, we are not in the worst-case scenario that, that we may be planning for, uh, at this point. Uh, council members, are there any additional questions for Senator before we close this portion of our evening? If you have more than three minutes, Tori's gonna mute you anyway, so might as well, might as well say. All right, well, I did not see anybody, again, thank you very much.
Sorry to interrupt, there is, um, a hand raised? If we're open to questions still?
Counsel?
Hand raised?
No, public.
Okay, well, we still are, we're still on that point, it hasn't closed yet, so fire away.
Okay, um, I apologize if I do not state your name correctly, um, Tazwar Rahman, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, oh, you are unmuted already, so go ahead and speak.
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Taz Rahman, and I'm a Berkeley resident. Um, the reason I'm here is to voice my support in favor of Resolution R-2620. I should also note that I'm a volunteer at Voters Not Politicians. So being flexible about access to voting has always been important, and it's now more important than ever before in light of the pandemic. As we've seen across the country, new voter registrations have plummeted, and the effects on turnout is yet unknown. And while vote by mail is a great option and the safest way to vote during the pandemic, it's not for everyone, especially for the countless communities who don't trust it. So our goal should be to have open access to the polls and encourage vote by mail, but also to reduce the long lines we've seen in other states, which are a danger to public health. I believe that R-2620 would do that. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to your conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Taz. Uh, before we close, uh, public comments, any, were there any additional questions for Senator McMorro? Didn't appear that there were. No, okay, well, again, thank you, uh, Mayor, for being with us this evening and for your continued work in, in fighting, um, for all of us in Lansing.
Thanks, everybody, stay cool.
Not gonna be doing much of that for the next day, Dave, but, yeah, it's summer, right? Okay. All right, I will now move on to our order of business this evening. Uh, first is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 38th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, June 15th, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes, to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any corrections or additions? Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, just one small correction in my communications, uh, speaking about the Memorial Tree Program. Um, instead of where it's, he stated the cost includes the tree planting and plaque, it should instead be, um, he stated, the donor must pay for the tree planting and provide a plaque.
Okay, thank you, and I know you have been in communication, so we can update that certainly in these minutes. Any other corrections or additions to the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to our regular agenda this evening, Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Presentation, the city council will receive a presentation from representatives of the Clinton River Watershed Council Watertowns Program.
All right, I know we have Chris up with us this evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you like to give a little bit of background before the presentation, please? Certainly, Mr. Mayor, uh, if you recall, back on December 2nd, 2019, city council did approve, uh, our entering into an agreement with the Clinton River Watershed Council, uh, specifically to work with their Watertowns Program. Uh, the goal of this program was to introduce, uh, green infrastructure in the city of Berkeley. Uh, the goal of green infrastructure is to divert stormwater away from, uh, the city sewer system, specifically our combined sewer system. Uh, from there, city staff worked with Watertown staff, uh, as well as, uh, as Mark's mentioned, uh, with input with, uh, the Environmental Advisory Committee as well. And the fruits of those labors are being presented to you this evening by, uh, Chris Bobrick and, uh, Dr. Don Carpenter, who have joined us this evening. Okay, with that, uh, Mr. Bobrick, Dr. Carpenter, who would like to kick things off?
Hi, I will kick things off today, um, my name is Chris Bobrick, I'm the watershed planner with the Clinton River Watershed Council. Um, and just, just begin, uh, Matt, should I share my screen, or, um, do we have another avenue for that?
Uh, we have another avenue for that.
Okay, wonderful, um, so yeah, I mean, we can get started right with the presentation, that'd be great.
Um, I'm gonna share my screen, uh, if you could just let me know when to move to the next slide, that'd be great.
I'll just, I'll say next slide or something.
Sounds good.
Okay, fantastic, so, like I said, my name's Chris Bobrick, uh, watershed planner with the Clinton River Watershed Council. Um, you can actually go to the next slide. So just a brief background of what the Watershed Council is, we're a nonprofit environmental organization that's, uh, really dedicated to protecting, enhancing, and celebrating the Clinton River, uh, its watershed and Lake St. Clair. So there's a lot around here that, that we're tackling these days. Um, to support that mission, we, that mission, we have a vision of promoting individual and community actions that, um, try and protect and improve the health of these ecosystems and these water resources. And we do that through primarily three, uh, pillars of service. One is education, uh, the second one is restoration, and third one is stewardship. And one program that we have, uh, is called Watertowns, and that really transcends all three of those, those pillars of service. pillars of service. And that brings us to why we're here today. For the last several months, we're going to go over what Dr. Carpenter and his team have created for you centered around that Watertowns Program. You can actually advance the next slide. And so that Watertowns Program, in essence, is a community-based initiative that really helps, it helps take each community and looks at green infrastructure as well as some of the water resources, try reconnecting those communities to those. So what we'll see in the next few slides or so is Dr. Carpenter's work of helping each community envision exactly what that type of green infrastructure would look like. You can advance to the next slide. And so there are some goals with this program. And I also want to try and jump ahead a little bit to some key aspects I want you to think about as we're progressing through these slides. One, there's going to be a five thousand dollar mini grant that's automatically yours for the cities to use to implement some of these programs or to use to help establish some aspect of the Watertowns Program. And another thing I wanted to mention is that the Watershed Council isn't going anywhere. So we're here to help you implement some of these and see some of these projects through. So this isn't just a one-time deal program. We're here to help you and see all of this through, hopefully, to fruition. So with those two elements in mind, keep those in mind as we go through, and I'll probably reiterate those near the end of Dr. Carpenter's presentation. But I will turn it over to Dr. Carpenter to go over the goals and some of the conceptual plans.
Thank you, Chris. I assume everybody can hear me okay. Tori, can you give me a thumbs up? Can you hear me right? All right, thanks, Tori. So again, my name is Don Carpenter, Berkeley High School, class of nineteen eighty-nine. So I had my thirtieth reunion last year. So as somebody who's also been a professor for twenty years, not having control of this presentation is just about killing me. So I know Tori's going to do a great job, but not being able to click on that button is really tough for someone like me. So the goals of this project, as Chris has mentioned a little bit, is we're going to be showing you conceptual site designs and artistic renderings of recommended improvements or suggested considerations. A couple of things I also want to say upfront is that the things we're going to be showing you, these are ideas based on best practices. You're under no obligation to do anything. Some of these things are going to resonate with you, some of them may not resonate with you, but these are all just recommendations based on best practices. And we're generated, working with people from the, like Mike Mark and Matt and others in your community. On each of these slides, you're going to see how much stormwater we're going to try to keep out of the Clinton River watershed, or in this case, you know, keep out of the George Coon Drain, some of the combined sewer areas in Southern Oakland County. And then we're going to do a cost estimate. And we've been doing this now for seven years. We got three Watertowns this year, Berkeley, Frenden, and Sunland. We've had quite a few over the last seven years. And courses is the first one we've had to do virtually. I'm used to standing in front of the city council, so this makes this a little different as well. All right, Tori, go ahead. So what is green infrastructure? When we started doing this, I guess the easiest thing for me to say is the picture behind me is green infrastructure. But when we first started doing this, people really didn't know what green infrastructure was. My job has gotten easier over the last seven years in that most people have a general idea of what it is. But the quickest way to think of it is green infrastructure is a way of using Mother Nature to treat stormwater. So gray infrastructure is the pipes, the catch basins, all of the underground type stuff. Green infrastructure, we're going to use plants. We're going to use those plants to capture and treat stormwater runoff before it gets into our system. Go ahead, Tori. Oh, that's right, we're not doing in animation mode. Sorry. Okay, so the slide on the right is actually covering up the picture on the left there. But in a nutshell, what we're talking about is, we used to have an area in Southern, in this part of the county, of prairies and meadows with mixed forests. We paved over that with freeways, a lot of impervious surfaces, businesses. We built everything up. And now that it's built up, you see a lot more water quality problems and a lot of flooding problems. And some of those flooding problems are things like the Clinton River and the Rouge River. But some of those flooding problems are things like the Royal Oak and Berkeley have experienced with these heavy storm events. It just overwhelmed the stormwater system. So what we're trying to do here is revert back to a more natural way of dealing with stormwater and then also consider the placemaking or human element as well. All right, Tori, go ahead. So we started this project in December of two thousand and nineteen, where we sat down and met with representation of Berkeley. We did some initial site visits back in December. We then came back and had a meeting where we said, here's what we're seeing, here's what we're thinking, kind of got tentative thumbs up from the community, went out in the field, took some more pictures, did a little bit more work, had another interim meeting, and then we had a final review last week before this presentation to city council. What you're going to get, and I'm saying going because I haven't delivered it yet, you're going to get a report, you're going to get printed graphic boards. I'll drop those off at City Hall at some point in time, then you can actually put those graphic boards out in like the library or the council, outside the council office, so people can kind of see what's being recommended, maybe even gather some feedback of it. And then probably the most important thing is you're going to get a USB drive with copies of everything. So you'll have cost estimates, you'll have renderings, photographs, presentations, anything you can need to actually write grants is included in this. As we go along, you're also going to see cost estimates. The cost estimates are based on a few things. We're going to use some research-based cost estimates. But one thing we do is we just assume that the, you're going to, what we call primary contract labor, which basically means that we're going to assume that you don't have volunteers or DPW or Parks and Rec staff that can do the work, that you're going to have to outsource it, and that you're going to have to build it using hired labor at wage rates. So some of these costs that you'll see are actually higher than would be if you did it yourself. And I know a lot of communities in the past have used either their DPW staff or citizens to actually reduce their costs. Next slide, Tori. So I'm almost in a position where we're going to start picking up the pace here. I just wanted to orient yourself to what you're going to see. So on every, most of the green infrastructure slides, you're going to see, you're going to see a raindrop. And that raindrop represents, the light blue raindrop represents how much water comes off that site if you got two point three-three inches of rain. The reason two point three-three inches of rain is important is that's a pretty common design storm for green infrastructure. It represents the amount of rain we'd see in a twenty-four-hour period over every two years. Another way of thinking about it is it represents ninety-nine point five percent of all rainstorms. So if I can design green infrastructure to treat two point three inches of rain, I'm capturing and treating ninety-nine point five percent of all the rain that comes out of the sky. And then you'll see that we have a reduction proposed. Some of the things are going to be a hundred percent reduction, which means we're keeping, we're capturing and treating all that water. Some, we may not add enough retrofit space, and it'll be a little bit less. Okay, Tori, go ahead. All right, so now we're going to move a lot faster, because from here on out, it's all pictures now that you've got orientation to what we're looking at. So here's the city of Berkeley. And click next slide. These are the areas we focused on, J.C. Park, Griffith Dowie, we looked at the boulevards on Beverly and Edgewood, and we looked at the Parks and Rec Building. And I think one of the other things that's important, and I think Mark mentioned this early on, thank you for the introduction, Mark, is that these things can be replicated in other places. So if you see some of the resonates with you, but it may, it could also work in another parking lot or another boulevard. It doesn't have to be just these locations. Next slide. So let's start at J.C. Park. So I got the opportunity to visit J.C. Park for the first time since I had prom pictures taken there in nineteen eighty-nine. It was quite the stroll down memory lane. So this is off Webster and Phillips Avenue. Next slide. So we're recommending permeable paving off of Webster Avenue. Webster Avenue sheet flows to the park right now, so you could capture that, because that's like the High Point area there. And there's opportunity for a couple rain gardens inside the park. And we're going to show you a couple of different variations. One's called a curb-cut rain garden, which means it's taking water off the street. And then the other is more of a typical rain garden, which means it's only taking water from the sidewalks and the area around it. Next slide. So this is the existing parking lot right there. You can tell we took this picture in December. You got a little bit of snow and leaves right there. Next slide. So we, you can put in porous pavers in there, sheet flow Webster into this porous pavement area, a hundred percent reduction of the two-year twenty-four-hour storm at a price point of about ninety thousand dollars. All right, next slide. So here's an existing, you can see that catch basin in the front there. Next slide. What we recommend here is curb cutting or capturing that water off the road, going underneath the sidewalk and then putting it into a rain garden. So you're capturing all the runoff, not all, but a vast majority of the runoff off of Phillips Avenue right there and putting it into this, into this park. So it's a hundred percent reduction. You can see the price point of fifty-four thousand. Okay, next slide. You've got just a picture of the park existing, and then here's our vision, right? So this is a fairly large rain garden, and it's taking the water from all the playground areas around it. I think this is a really good example of, you might look at this and go forty-two thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for a garden. Couple things. So one is already mentioned, that's assuming contractual labor, so you're paying a professional landscaper to do all this work. I guarantee this could come in at a much cheaper price if you worked with Parks and Rec, DPW staff, maybe you got some citizen volunteers to do the planting. So we don't like to assume that a community can have access to those resources, but we think this can be done quite a bit cheaper using in-kind type services. And this is a fairly large rain garden as well. It looks smaller in the picture than it is in reality. Next slide. And there are other opportunities, should you wish to expand this concept, but we didn't render everything when we render some things. Next slide. Okay, now moving on to the Griffin Avenue. So here are some rain garden and/or bio-retention and porous pavement options that would exist like, say, downtown parking lots. So these are alleyways and parking lots that are owned by the city. So the other thing I should point out is, everything we do is a retrofit. So it's not a green fill or new. It's like, we're looking for opportunities to retrofit existing infrastructure, and we're also looking for opportunities for infrastructure that's kind of the end of its life. So if this was like a brand-new parking lot, we wouldn't say, hey, let's tear up a brand-new parking lot. We're looking for parking lots that are already kind of worn. So next slide. So we have some opportunities for permeable pavers and bio-retention. Next slide. So I'll start with the west. Next slide. Here's the existing parking lot. When it's time to resurface that, go to next slide. We like to put in the permeable pavement in the parking stalls. That's what we try to go for right here. The traditional asphalt or concrete in the driving lanes is an appropriate use, and then we sheet flow it to the outside, and we put the permeable pavement in that area. And then it infiltrates into the ground where it can, and there's a pipe that it overflows to, and once you hit kind of the capacity of the soil, it'll overflow into a catch basin that's at the downstream end. Next slide. So here's Griffin Alleyway. Next slide. A really good practice for alleyways is do pavers, so heavy-duty concrete block pavers that allow the water to go in the interstitial space or in the stone in between the two. And again, once that reservoir, the stone reservoir that's underneath that alley fills up, the catch basin and the existing infrastructure is in place for the overflow events to move into that. Next slide. So here's Griffin Parking Lot East. The reason the bio-retention is where they're located, you can see that, is because that's where existing catch basins are. So we want to retrofit it around existing catch basins. This is the direction we would go. Next slide. So here's the existing parking lot. You can see the catch basin right in the middle. Next slide. Make that Honda disappear right there, and then we put in a nice little rain garden around that catch basin. It takes up about three parking spots. So in this situation, you are losing a little bit of parking, but you gain parking lot islands and some beautification. Next slide. So total, this is a situation where, without taking up a lot of parking spots, we couldn't get a hundred percent. You could always get a hundred percent, but sometimes that means you lose more parking than you really want to lose. Next slide. An alternative here would be to reslope the parking lot to get away from the existing catch basins and kind of utilize the corner. So typically, if you go back one slide, when we see those things that are striped, like concrete that's just striped, if it's there for handicap use, then you want to leave it straight, because that's, you know, handicap van accessible. But if it's just there because it's not a complete parking spot, it's a great opportunity to do green infrastructure. So that's what we did on, go to the next slide, in this option right here. All right, next slide. Boulevards, next slide. We looked at a couple of places in the boulevards here where you could do kind of native plantings or beautification, less mowing of turf grass, especially in Beverly Boulevard where you've got kind of a gateway to your community a little bit. Next slide. Residential gateway, I should say. So here's Edgewood. You had, so there's a lot of turf grass right there. Next slide. Really good opportunity to kind of convert this into a prairie meadow-type situation. Next slide. Okay, so end cap right there. Next slide. And these are primary for beautification purposes. You know, it's nice that you don't have to mow as much turf grass. You can actually have long-term maintenance savings by not mowing as much. But because the way the road is crowned here, there's no water that drains to it. So we can't really do curb cuts because water isn't going to flow uphill. So it'd take a lot of restructuring, this infrastructure, to get water to slope to the middle. Long-term, that's something you might want to consider, but short-term, it would be cost prohibitive to do that. Next slide. So Parks and Rec parking lot, as the Parks and Rec Building gets kind of repurposed or looked at, this is another parking lot we looked at. Next slide. So good opportunity for putting bio-retention islands around existing catch basins and capture and treat that water before it goes into the system. Next slide. So there's in the foreground here. Next slide. So that's kind of what it would look like. And again, you know, ninety-nine point five percent of all rain comes out of the sky and now gets captured and treated by the system, and it's kept out of the combined sewers and kept out of, kept from straining the infrastructure and some of the urban flooding we see. Next slide. So that just kind of summarizes the number of parking spots and the size of the islands. Next slide. We also looked at a different example here. This is going to take fourteen parking spots, and it would cause you to reslope the entire parking lot. So one of the things I should also point out is, when we do these cost estimates, these cost estimates are for the green infrastructure component, not necessarily the parking resurfacing component, which is another expense. It's a gray infrastructure expense. But if you were going to redo this entire parking lot, you could have it sheet flow to the west. Next slide. And put in a really nice bioswale along this whole way here and separate the parking lot from the street. Next slide. And putting a sidewalk in as well. So if you wanted to make it to the street and the sidewalk are separated in front of the recs in. Next slide. There's also opportunities here for porous pavers. I, this is a situation where I don't think it's as smart of a place as you could use some of the other green, but it's one of the things that could be looked at. Next slide. So in totality, what we came up with is, we came up with, we're basically looking at capturing and treating one hundred and twenty-one thousand gallons. That's the size of storage that we have. So one hundred and twenty-one, about one hundred and twenty thousand gallons of storage. And when you actually convert the total price tag, it comes up to about four dollars and thirty cents per gallon. So a little bit more than a cost per gallon of milk to capture and treat, again, ninety-nine point five percent of all rain. Okay, next slide. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it back over to Chris, because Chris is going to talk about the implementation phase of this and give examples from other communities who were in your shoes in previous years.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. So like I said at the beginning, you are eligible for that five thousand dollar mini grant. That is yours to use. We could use that. We can discuss how to use that in any fashion. Some communities use it to either implement some sort of rain garden installation, or they'll use it as leverage in grants application, or it'll just go towards a larger project and have that in there. We also have a great volunteer base that we can also help develop for you a little bit more about that mini grant that requires a one-to-one match. So not only would it be either cash match, or it could be some volunteer efforts or some match from DPW or other services. So we'll help with that implementation. We'll also give up a long-term maintenance plan for any type of that of green infrastructure that gets installed. And you go to the next slide. And so we're going to run, just, these are all the communities that have been part of Watertowns from its inception, two thousand and fourteen. And so we're looking forward to, and we still work with each of these communities, trying, some of them have implemented some green infrastructure based on this program. Others are still working towards that, and we're still right along there, helping them along. Next slide, please. So these are just some examples of some of those communities that have already implemented some of that green infrastructure. So one of them was one of the first cities that was Clarkston where, you guys should go to the next slide, give a better representation. On the left side there, you can see they had a very dilapidated bridge. They needed some restoration along the stream bank. And so they actually got some community support through this Watertowns program. You go to the next slide where they built the actual, the individual there on the right side kneeling down beside the rain garden. He helped fund some of that bridge work. And so it all tied together in this one grand project just based off some of these renderings that Dr. Carpenter and his team have provided. So go to the next slide. This is Clinton Township. This is a naturalization of one of the ponds around there. It's rendered a nice prairie ecosystem there, some nice fishing access, even some goose management there in the renderings. Next slide. And this was the final product by year, so two thousand and fifteen, it was just planted. Two thousand and sixteen started to green up a lot. And you see very robust, diverse green infrastructure, naturalized shoreline in two thousand and seventeen. Next slide, please. And so this is, the top is before, this is at their municipal campus in Clinton Township and some rendering of some parking lot islands. Next slide. And this is the overall view of their parking lot. So they had the grand plan of redesigning or reconstructing. They already had a parking lot at the end of its life, so they had to redo it. And they used some of these renderings that Dr. Carpenter provided to implement. They didn't implement everything, but they used some of those renderings. Then we'll see a nice close-up here and then next slide. Some of those inverted parking lot islands, very simple plant palette that's easy for maintenance, still provides aesthetic beauty and it's actually functions appropriately. Next slide. And this is outside the Clinton River Watershed Council office where we just had this vacant, this really long parking lot and some of this grass that the municipal office just kept mowing and mowing. And next slide, please. We can see that through this rendering, a nice rain garden and a level spreader there at the top, four bay, a hundred percent reduction in stormwater at that, for that system. Next slide will show you what it actually looked like after planting. We didn't, we just cleaned it up too. We do maintain it, so it is looking a little bit more robust than it had when it was first planted. But it has functioned perfectly and we love it. Yeah, you can go to the next slide. So there's another parking lot example from Sterling Heights. On the left side you see that parking lot, the end of its, near the end of its life and then re-resurface. And some of those parking lot islands were also included from the Watertowns rendering. So you can go to the next slide. We see at the top that kind of coned parking lot island and then rendered concave parking lot island with some of those curb cuts that were similar to what was designed for you today. Go to the next slide. And we see some of those up close. Again, another simple plant palette, some mulch, it really looks nice and it functions well. And next slide. And that's it. So just a few iterate, just want to mention again that you have the five thousand dollar mini grant. And I also want to thank all of the staff there, Mark Richardson speaking up part of their environmental community. They've really were instrumental in helping envision this and really helping Dr. Carpenter and his team know exactly how to proceed with these renderings. So if Dr. Carpenter doesn't have anything else to mention, we'll take any questions if now's the time.
Dr. Carpenter, anything else you want to add before we turn it over for questions?
No, questions is fine.
All right, well, thank you, Chris and Dr. Carpenter for being with us and presenting the presentation today. Questions from council members? Councilmember Henin.
Yeah, just a couple of questions, but first, thank you very much. Really appreciate the work you've done here and the quality of what you've shown us. The first question I have is how well do permeable pavement and rain gardens do in heavy clay situations like we have here?
We have clay here?
So I'm going to answer that in two parts, right? So rain gardens and porous pavers are different in how they function with clay. So obviously, we've implemented rain gardens and porous paper systems in southeast Michigan on other clay soil sites. There's quite a few examples of that over in, actually at Lawrence Technological University. We have a stormwater trail where we've done both of that on clay. The porous paper system, it ends up adding costs. It still works, but what happens there is you need to have an underdrain because the water can't get through the clay soil fast enough. And so you have to put like a perforated pipe underdrain system in there. So as the water goes through, you might get some infiltration, but then eventually you don't want that to fill all the way up and spill back up through the pavement. And so you want to have the, you do need an underdrain. And so those costs were part of the estimate we showed you. So it's a little more expensive to have permeable pavers or porous pavement on clay soils, but it's doable. The other one is the rain gardens, same thing. You basically are sizing those appropriately because you don't get as much infiltration. If it's going to be a bio-retention cell or something around existing infrastructure, same thing. You're going to have to have an underdrain, a perforated pipe drain so that if this thing gets completely saturated and full of water, it doesn't sit there for days. It drains in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So you need to put in that perforated pipe. However, with the native plants, those deep-rooted natives, those root systems will get down into the clay. They'll actually slowly open up or break open the subsoil structure. And you'll get those roots will go six, seven, eight feet down. And once that happens, you get a lot more water moving through that clay. And we've got some systems in Detroit that were built on clay. That water just goes, as time has gone on, that water really gets into the ground because it uses those roots to open up that clay system.
All right, and things like, again, like the rain gardens, the permeable pavements, I know they require some maintenance. Do we have inside our cost estimates what an estimate on the ongoing maintenance for those things would be?
So our cost estimates that we provided are construction cost estimates, again, using contractual labor. We do not provide a maintenance cost estimate. There is some research out there. Maintenance costs can vary significantly. I almost hate to put an estimate on maintenance because a lot of it has to do with aesthetics. What do you want it to look like? If you want it to look like a beautiful garden, you need to maintain it like a beautiful garden. If you're willing to let it go a little wild-looking, then you know, you don't need to have as much maintenance. So a lot of, we, when we put together, Chris and I have worked to put together maintenance programs before. And then a lot of times those maintenance programs are handed off to like a DPW or Parks and Rec staff as part of their regular, they mean as part of the regular duties. And so then how you cost estimate that has to do with like kind of your own personal maintenance budgets. And how do you, how do you account for people's time? As far as pavers or porous pavement goes, they do need to be vacuumed typically twice a year. Typically, each time it's vacuumed is a couple hundred bucks.
Okay, thank you. Then just a comment for the rest of the council. I was going to mention this in my communications, but it fits a whole lot better here. We've been doing the city street tree program and have pretty much, you know, we were providing them for free this year and pretty much the list is full already, you know, more than a month ahead of the deadline. And trees, street trees are a very effective stormwater management system. And I was going to suggest that we also consider in next year's budget, increasing the size of that program so we can get more trees in specifically for the purpose of stormwater management. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions and or comments? Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, just a quick thank you to Dr. Carpenter, Chris, city staff. And you know, certainly as the liaison to the EAC, the Environmental Advisory Committee. Thank you to Mark and the entire committee for a lot of the work that everybody put in. I think this is really, really exciting to get going down this road. I think there's a lot of opportunity to really get innovative and kind of change how we handle stormwater management. So thank you all.
Thank you.
No questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you again both. Oh, Councilmember Baker, I lied.
Yeah, sorry about the last-minute interruption here. But I'd also like to echo gratitude and appreciation to you folks and the full team that helped to research this and make it happen. Two quick questions. First, will these slides in their entirety be made available on the city website? And then secondly, could you perhaps elaborate a little bit more about what some of those common rain gardens, what it entails? Is it simply just putting the mulch on the top? Or do we dig into the ground a certain depth in order to provide the retention capacity? Just so our residents can kind of visualize a little bit of what the process might look like. We've seen the before and after, so I guess I'm asking a little bit about the deering, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So they're typically, that's a great question. They're typically twenty-four to thirty inches deep. Sometimes they're shallow as eighteen inches. A lot of it depends upon how large of a drainage area that's coming to it. For the ones we showed you, those I think are thirty inches deep. So you're excavating out thirty inches of that tighter clay soil. You tend to backfill then with a mixture of sand and compost. You don't want a lot of clay. You really want to have a mostly sand and compost that provides that, compost can hold more than its weight in water. So that's really like a sponge. So that compost kind of holds all that water up there. And then what we normally spec out is six to twelve inches of ponding. So you get about six to twelve inches of water on the top if you get a good heavy rainfall. And then that water's gone in about twenty-four hours. And so it kind of filters down into that sand and compost bio-retention soil mix. And then eventually it'll make its way down into the earth beneath it. So that's what the kind of the cross-section looks like. As far as where these materials are housed, that's an internal question. I know you weren't asking that to me. You get everything and then how you guys wish to distribute that information is up to you.
Excellent, but thank you again very much.
All right, well, again, thank you both for the presentation. Now the real work begins as we try to find the locations and the funding to be able to enact some of these projects. But obviously, this is something that's incredibly important, as was mentioned, in our community and in the region. And we need to certainly do our part to increase our capacity to, for retention when it comes to rainwater, especially in significant rainstorms, which we've seen over the last five, six years certainly, and probably will be seeing more in the future. So thank you both. And with that, we will conclude our first presentation. And Ms. Mitchell, we will move on to item number two, please.
Presentation, the city council will receive a presentation on the 2019 Planning Commission Annual Report and 2020 Work Plan.
Can I just hand this right over to you?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. It's wonderful to be here and to present this report to you. I'm sorry, I don't have a wonderful PowerPoint presentation to provide to you, but the annual report and the work plan is included in your packet. And this is a requirement from the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, which states in part that a planning commission shall make an annual written report to the legislative body concerning its operations and the status of planning activities, including recommendations regarding actions by the legislative body related to planning and development. So the planning commission held twelve meetings during two thousand and nineteen, in which case they reviewed nine site plans, two special land uses, two rezonings and five zoning text amendments. A number of those items did come before the city council for final approval or adoption. So many of these will be familiar to you. But I have included the summary and kind of up-to-date status of all of the projects that we had, especially the ones that you weren't privy to review, such as, you know, facade changes or facade changes in the city of Berkeley. So with that, I've also included our 2020 work plan. This I like to provide to all of the communities that I've worked in because it not only shows, the annual report shows what we've done and where we've been, but the work plan shows what we hope to accomplish in the future. And these are more long-term goals for either this coming year or even the following year, depending on the projects. And certainly doesn't discount any applicant-driven requests for site plans, special land use, any rezonings and certainly any zoning text amendments that might come this way. But we have three items that we're going to be working on very closely. Updating the community master plan, which as you all know, we are undertaking and working through with Carla Wortman Associates. The redevelopment-ready community certification. We are still working through that. This is a long and lengthy process. And one of the major components of achieving that certification is the master plan. So once we have that document adopted by a city council, then we can move forward with some of the other minor items that would complete that certification process. And the third one is the zoning ordinance technical review. Typically, this is done after a master plan document has been adopted, in which case you want to make sure that your master plan and your zoning ordinance work in tandem with each other and that any ordinance that you have is supported by the master plan. So it's very typical to go through and do a full technical review and then a rewrite of your zoning ordinance once a master plan is adopted. So those are the three major projects we'll be working in for the remainder of two thousand and twenty and certainly well into two thousand and twenty-one. But you know, we're very excited to continue working with the planning commission, DDA, city council and all the community groups here in the city of Berkeley. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for our director as she plays through the pain? Councilmember Gavin.
Well, I would just want to offer thanks on the other committee that I liaise on to the planning commission for the work certainly they put in for the last year. And Aaron also, you know, always elevating the level of documents and just work product that the planning commission itself gets and that the council always gets from you as well. I think this is a really nice document that lays out the work plan. And so thank you for everything you do as staffing that, the commission.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, I just wanted to comment as well on that 2020 work plan. I think it's ambitious, attainable and so very needed. So thank you so much for putting that together. I also want to thank everyone who serves on the planning commission and/or the master plan steering committee. And thank you so much to Aaron Schluto and the Community Development Department for implementing recommendations and getting this good work done. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, Aaron, thank you again for not only the work that you have done here and presented here, but the work that you will continue to do, especially as we are, as you are going through ordinances pretty closely right now. And then we'll have the technical review once the master plan is adopted. But I know when you came in, there was some work that certainly needed to be done and you have been very aggressive in getting us up to speed and catching us up in some of the areas where maybe we were not doing as well as we would like. So thank you and continue that good work with the commission moving forward. Speaking of no additional questions and comments, we'll let you relax again for a few minutes. And Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three, our new number three on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1320, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section one-three-eight dash two-nine-eight of article five, division two of chapter one-thirty-eight zoning, to update the citation to the city's adopted building codes and to prescribe a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to approve O-1320?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This follows up on our conversation from back in May as we worked through the code of ordinances and now the zoning code to remove references to BOKA, which is an outdated organization. The state has now updated with the Michigan residential code. And so this, we believe, is the last reference to BOKA that needs to be removed. Your packet includes a, the red text amendment as well as a memo from the community development director on giving the process of how this got to you.
Anything you'd like to add?
Note, the reason this one is coming to you separate from the other ones is this was located in the zoning ordinance. And in order to get this removed, it had to go through the more lengthy process of discussion, public hearing with the planning commission with a recommendation to approve. So this is the last one in our ordinance. And we're excited to finally have this one off the books.
Any additional questions or comments relatively straightforward as the Relatively straightforward, as the city manager and our director have walked us through today. All right, seeing none. What, was there somebody? No? Okay, I don't know where that noise came from. Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-1320?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1420, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 138-526 of article five, division seventeen of chapter 138 zoning, to add local business to the schedule of regulations.
Is there a motion to approve O-1420?
So moved.
Or? Moved by councilmember Gavin, supported by councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
As mentioned in the previous two agenda items, the community development director, as well as the planning commission, continue to find ways to improve our zoning code. In this instance, it was noticed that the local business district did not have a set of directions, as many of our other, or all of our other zoning districts do. And so included in your packet here is a blue line text this time, as well as a memo from the community development director outlining the need for this improvement to be made and this update, this error to be corrected in our zoning code.
Erin, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I just want to reference the memo that dated June 29th. So when we noticed that the local business district did not have a line in the schedule of regulations, went back to see when the local business district itself was created as a district in the community and why it was not put into the schedule of regulations. And after some research, it was found that it was originally in the code of, or the schedule of regulations ordinance in 2007 and 2008. And somewhere along the line, there were some changes to the table itself. And we think, just pure guess, is that it was inadvertently omitted from the table. So since that time, there hasn't been any developments on the nine properties that are located within that district on 12 Mile. There have been a number of permits that have been issued for additions or parking or things of that nature, but nothing that would constitute planning commission or things that needed to be referenced with height or setbacks or anything like that. So this is really something that just we noticed needed to be done, but it certainly hasn't prohibited any development or anything like that in the years in between. So, but we wanted to make sure that it was on the books, that we had something in case there was development in that area and that we had something to regulate the height, because we certainly didn't want a 600-foot building put right in the middle of our local business district on 12 Mile. So the planning commission held the required public hearing. It was unanimously recommended to be approved and recodified into the local business district in the schedule of regulations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Boy, this is an example of you going through and seeing things and finding things and making sure that we are updating those things. I see this dates back to December 17th of 2007, and I apologize, that was my first meeting on council, so I may have to take the hit for that one. Although it was in there initially, I don't know when it disappeared. But any questions, in all seriousness, for Director Goshluto, as we find and continue to make sure that we're updating everything that needs to be updated? Okay, it seemed a lot of heads nodding no, so Erin, you did a great job there, as we mentioned, you continue to do that. No more questions or comments? Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-1420?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Public hearing, matter of holding a public hearing regarding proposed vacation of portion of public alley.
Before I open the public hearing, Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to give a quick intro into what the public hearing is going to be about?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. If you recall back to our conversations back in February, you'll remember that we did sign a collaborative agreement, ourself, as well as Lugo Properties and the ownership committee that has the restaurant to the south there. The alleyway in question here is the north of Eden. It actually ends mid-block, somewhat randomly. The alleyway does not go through the street to the north. And so between the bank property as well as a couple hundred feet to the south there, so we're vacating that portion of that alley and that portion only. On either side, the land is privately owned by Lugo Properties. So as the alleyway is divided, a portion will end up being tacked on to both of those properties. So again, we've already talked about this. We actually had this on a previous agenda item as well. And we had to, we had some issues with, as COVID rared its ugly head, we had to re-up our notices on there. So this has actually been noticed to the surrounding individuals twice now. And so anybody that wants to comment has had several opportunities of notice to be able to do so, and hopefully they join us this evening. So again, this is a portion of an alleyway, and the portion's going to go to Lugo Properties.
Thanks, thank you for that. And with that, I will declare the public hearing open at 8:16 PM. Tori, as you see anybody raising their hand, please let them speak.
Seeing none at this time.
Yeah, it just looked like somebody was coming in, but it does not appear at this point. We'll give them another minute or so. You know, while we're doing that, actually, I should probably read this number just in case somebody is not there again. If you would like to comment during the public hearing, please call us if you're not on the Zoom at 1-312-626-6799. And that's 1-312-626-6799. Okay, still nobody?
No, sir.
All right, seeing nobody commenting during the public hearing, I will close the public hearing at 8:17 PM. And we will move on. Ms. Mitchell, please, would you read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-2420, matter of authorizing a resolution to vacate portion of public alley.
Is there a motion to approve R-2420?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Proton Dean.
Support.
With support from councilmember Price. I believe you already did a pretty good intro, Mr. Baumgarten, here. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, it's really pretty straightforward and part of the collaborative agreement that we already discussed. It had been noticed multiple times, and there was ample opportunities to at least attend tonight. So seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you call the roll on R-2420?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number seven on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R-2520, matter of approving a resolution for election services between Oakland County and the city of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-2520? Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by councilmember Baker with support from councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Mr. Mayor, I'll give an introduction of this, but certainly the city clerk is our expert in this regard. Oakland County has reached out to us, as well as every other, I believe, voting jurisdiction in the county, and offered their high-speed tabulators for the calculation, for the tabulation of absentee ballots. We do know that this is going to be a heavily utilized absentee ballot election, based on even just being a little bit over a month out from the August election and already having nearly 4,000 applications in hand. So this is going to be no cost to the city, but it is the county government reaching out and offering a helping hand, making sure that we don't have any delays in tabulating the people's will on election day.
Ms. Mitchell?
City manager Baumgarten summarized that quite well. Definitely, it's the safest option. I feel it's the most fiscally responsible and timely option. And I did want to say, we do have a phenomenal absentee counting board, and in no way is this a reflection of our fine residents who volunteer for that year after year. And we will have other roles for them available.
As we discussed, the absentees will probably be our largest precincts here moving forward, and the county helping us out to efficiently get those counted and back should only help to accelerate the efficiency of the process. And as Ms. Mitchell mentioned, this is not something that we said, oh, our counting board is not doing the job. It's just we know that it is going to be significantly larger undertaking, and the county reaching out to provide this assistance is very beneficial. Additional questions or comments for Ms. Mitchell or Mr. Baumgarten? No, seeing none. You guys are doing a wonderful job of explaining things today. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-2520?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to item number eight, please.
Resolution number R-2620, matter of approving a resolution to expand voting and registration access beyond the minimum required by the Michigan Constitution for even-year November general elections.
Is there a motion to approve R-2620?
Motion to approve.
Support. I saw Ross's mouth move. I'm going to give him the motion, and I heard councilmember Baker hop in with support when there was a little moment of silence. So, but let it be known that there was a lot of support to move this current item. Mr. Baumgarten, do you want to start, or do you want to go right to Ms. Mitchell?
Mr. Mayor, I'll only take the opportunity to say, this is continuing the trend this evening of our department heads and our city leadership making the services more abundant and better. Our city clerk has taken the lead on creating larger opportunities and more robust opportunities for people to make their voices heard on election day. So I'll start by saying kudos to her, and I'm sure council will have many of the same things to say.
Ms. Mitchell, what would you like to add and get a little more into the details here?
I would like to add, currently, the state requires that clerk's offices are open for eight hours the weekend before an election. That's the minimum requirement. For August, we will be open August 1st before the August 4th election from 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. This is a topic that I feel strongly about and very passionate. I'm thankful to the support of city manager Baumgarten, councilmember Price, Chris, who spoke earlier. It's a very great initiative. I'm disappointed we were unable to roll it out for the August election. Due to COVID-19, some of our plans, obviously, access to the public was prohibited, but we do have a full plan to roll out for November. Our community engagement officer, Ms. Mathis, is working with me on that. We will be working for November to have weeknight open hours at city hall. Weekend open hours, weeknight, weekend, sorry, socially distant registration drives at public meeting places. I do have an order in, the state is providing an additional Dropbox, which will offer residents an area to walk to and not need to place postage, and that will be collected by the city clerk's office. And we have many online initiatives available for registration and other voting opportunities, thanks also to the Secretary of State, who has done a great job pushing those out during COVID.
Well, thank you. And as we heard today from a couple of folks at the beginning during citizens' comments in support of this, I'm assuming that this is something that will obviously have the complete support of council as well. As we look at, you know, we have the COVID situation, folks maybe not feeling as comfortable coming onto a polling location. We also have folks who want to make sure that we are spreading the message across this country, and we want to make sure that everybody has access to be able to vote, to make sure that their message is heard loudly and clearly to those that get elected to those offices. So we certainly, I certainly support this, as we heard by the, a lot of folks trying to get in there to make the motion and to support this. I think it's also pretty common among council. But are there additional questions or comments? Councilmember Price.
Yes, I just want to thank Victoria Miss Mitchell and Gina in the clerk's office for embracing this request and promptly figuring out the logistics of expanding the open office hours. And also, thank you to Tori Mathis, our citizens' engagement officer, for your help to get the word out about these expanded hours and access. I have no doubt that this combination of accessibility and publicity will increase voter turnout. And when more people vote, our democracy is stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or kudos? No? Okay, all right. Well, thank you again, Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Mathis, for all the work that we're doing here and for being so responsive and making sure that everybody does have the opportunity to make their voices heard. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-2620?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move on to public comments for items that were not included on tonight's agenda. The same rules, as I mentioned in the previous section, apply here. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymich.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand or dial in at the number, again, 1-312-626-6799. You will be recognized by either name or number when you speak. Please state your name and city of residence, and remember that you have three minutes. After that, you will be muted.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a few hands raised.
Okay.
All right. Mr. David Ennis, I will go ahead and unmute you, and then you, maybe, there you are. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. David Ennis, I live in Berkeley. I think that every city council person and the mayor at this point have received an email from me, and I know that it was forwarded to the city manager. I am concerned with the thin blue line flags that appear on our police vehicles. I've talked to the chief about it. I'm not going to go through point by point everything I've covered in that letter, but I will say we have a symbol on our police vehicles that I think when it went on that police vehicle was probably less political than it is today, but we don't control the meaning of that symbol. I would like to see only symbols on the police vehicles that are official government symbols or which the city of Berkeley owns trademarks and controls the use of, because what we have now is a symbol that's been adopted by the alt-right and by the Blue Lives Matter movement as their symbol. And I don't believe that a symbol that is adopted by organizations that are partisan has any place being on the side of our police vehicles, because there's a certain percentage of the population- Because there's a certain percentage of the population that will view that partisan symbol and will interpret it in a way that could be detrimental to feeling that they're being protected by our officers and puts our officers in danger of escalation and misunderstanding. That's all I have to say.
We do have another hand raised. Megan, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Maybe. There you, oh, okay. There you are. All right. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Megan. I am a resident of Berkeley. I've recently been made aware of two issues with the Berkeley Public Safety Department. And while they may appear to be of a different nature, I believe that these are two very clearly connected issues. So first, like Mr. Ennis just spoke about, it was brought to my attention a few weeks ago that the Berkeley Public Safety Officers have been displaying the thin blue line flag on their patrol cars. The symbol, like Mr. Ennis mentioned, is commonly associated with the Blue Lives Matter movement and has been used by alt-right groups and law enforcement officers who oppose the Black Lives Matter movement. It is completely inappropriate to display such messaging on government vehicles. Now, if members of the Berkeley Police wish to display the symbol on their own privately owned vehicles, that's a separate discussion and I would never propose that we prevent them from doing so. But police vehicles are owned and operated by the city and should not be used to convey this type of messaging. The symbolism of this sticker means more than just the simple matter, Blue Lives Matter, the movement it's been associated with, and whatever you make of that movement or that motto. The thin blue line refers to the belief that the police are the sole entity keeping our society from descending into chaos. That's the original meaning of that symbol. So this symbol suggests that the city and its police officers are not open to change accountability or to fostering a positive relationship with Black residents, visitors, or the rest of our community. The Berkeley Public Safety Department shouldn't see themselves as in a conflict with the people of Berkeley. They should, you know, see themselves as our neighbors, which they are, and they should want to ensure that we all feel safe in our community. In the past several months, I've also learned about the Federal 1033 Program. This is a program that allows local police forces to receive surplus military equipment from the Department of Defense. In 2002, the Berkeley Public Safety Department received 10 M16 rifles through this program. There is no reason why police in our small community would require these weapons, which have been used in every military conflict since the Vietnam War. The thin blue line flag promotes an us versus them mentality when it comes to police-community relations. And if this is the mentality of our public safety officers, we should be concerned about their military equipment and the role they serve in our community. In conclusion, I would urge city council to, in the short term, remove the thin blue line stickers and all related imagery from Berkeley Police Cars. And in the long term, look into Berkeley's participation in the 1033 Program and prevent any future participation in the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Tori, any other hands raised?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
All right. And with that, we will close the public comment section. I appreciate those comments. I don't believe that our public safety is in conflict at all with our community personally. I think they do a number of things to make sure that they are completely involved in our community, but this is not the forum to address that. We now move on to communications. We will begin with councilmembers. Ms. Mitchell, who's up first?
We have Mayor Proton Dean.
Hey, Mayor Proton Dean.
Bridget, you're muted.
Okay, let's start that again. Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to begin my thanking Senator McMaro for coming in, informing us about the aid package. And I am especially encouraged to hear that she designated $14 million to domestic violence and food banks. But as you all know, I do have the topic of domestic violence is near and dear to my heart. And I've been working with Chief Kane on bringing the multidisciplinary team that Farmington Hills has, their Domestic Violence Task Force, to Berkeley. COVID sidelined that and our liaison from Haven is employed elsewhere now. So there is a meeting Wednesday, which I will be attending, obviously virtually. And my hope is that we will know who our liaison is from Haven so that we can continue to move forward in bringing this very, very successful and worthwhile program to Berkeley. On the Parks and Rec Department front, there's so much happening. I have some great updates for you. Registration is now open for virtual camps, so please check that out on the Parks and Rec webpage for more information. Outdoor classes are running in our parks. We have a lot of parks in Berkeley. Classes are running outside. It's been a little hot and sticky, but if you're interested in exercising outside, please visit the Parks and Rec webpage again for more information and to register. With the help of CMN, the Parks and Rec Department now has senior exercise, Zumba and Pio classes running both live and recorded on cable, YouTube, and Facebook. And all these classes are free. And you don't have to be a senior to take part in those classes, just so you know. July is National Parks and Recreation Month. A Parks and Recreation survey will be available to residents online beginning mid-July, the purpose of which is to better inform the Parks and Recreation Department as they were to complete their five-year recreation master plan. The survey will be available on the city's website, Facebook, and will be sent through eBlasts. And if you would like to complete the survey, you may also contact Parks and Recreation or the city's communication staff. And we really, Parks and Recreation is very much interested in your voice and hearing what your thoughts are. So please take a moment to, if you want to access that survey, if you want to reach out and have the survey directed directly to you, we really want to hear that because we want to reach as many residents as possible. The Parks and Rec Department will also be hosting a virtual town hall regarding the five-year master plan. And that's going to be in early August. They don't have a date yet set for that, so stay tuned. And they also plan to resume senior transportation as soon as work with SMART is completed. They're outfitting the vehicles for safety for not only riders but drivers. So stay tuned for more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hagan?
Right. The zoning board of appeals did not meet in June, but they will meet a week from tonight, Monday, July 13th, to review an application for a mural on the side of Salon Simply Beautiful. That building's on the east side of Coolidge, just a little bit north of Catawba. And then the tree board, their last meeting discussion revolved largely around the memorial tree and the city street tree program. And as mentioned previously, the offerings of free street trees this year, we, the full allotment is spoken for a month before the deadline is even here. But if you want to get on the waiting list for next year, you can still contact DPW. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. With regards to the Master Plan Steering Committee, the webinar series on various master plan topics wrapped up this last week. I thought they were incredibly valuable and thorough and thoughtful, so thank you to Aaron, to Carlisle Wardman for adapting during COVID and putting these on. I thought it was really well done. The next meeting will be July 21st at 7:00 p.m. My understanding is that it'll still be via Zoom, so you can check the city's website, the calendar on the city's website to get that link as well. So Planning Commission, many things on their last agenda were on our agenda tonight, so we saw much of that. In addition to a Master Plan Steering Committee update, their next meeting will be July 28th at 7:00 p.m., also via Zoom. And the Environmental Advisory Committee met on June 18th and certainly spoke about the energy plan and next steps with that, and also green infrastructure, which again, we heard a presentation about here tonight. So additionally, officers were elected at that meeting. So the next one won't be until August 20th at 6:30 p.m. There's no July meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I should probably just stop muting during these because I forget to turn mute off. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick updates as well. The Downtown Development Authority, the DDA Board, meets this upcoming Wednesday. And topics will include, in addition to the bylaws, the ongoing crowdfunding campaign to provide additional support to the businesses. Also more on the outdoor dining and selling and signage. And for more information about all the great things that are going on in our downtown and the kind of, and the various ways that the DDA is supporting our businesses throughout our downtown district, please visit downtownberkeley.com. The Historical Committee is scheduled to meet on July 14th, pending any COVID craziness here that the team is certainly being very conscious of. And topics will naturally include when and how to open up the museum safely by what means will we provide safe, you know, entrance and exits, mask requirements, those types of things, to ensure that everybody's safe, volunteers and patrons alike. And in the meanwhile, work, important work continues on scanning and preserving key photos and documents and and other Berkeley-related materials. So the work continues on their mission. The Technology Advisory Committee is next slated to meet on August 19th. They did meet in June and it was exciting to get everybody back together again, even in virtual forum, Brady Bunch style like we have here, which is really cool. And they're looking forward to continuing their projects. And finally, I'd like to, I'd like to quote our tremendous county treasurer, Andy Meisner, who posted a few days ago, "Our country was founded on the principles of freedom and justice for all, but they haven't always applied equally to every American. As we recognize our independence, let's keep working towards a more just and equitable society." I'd just like to take a moment to continue the conversation from previous meetings and just note out that, and note that we in Berkeley have had a lot of ground to cover over the years. From our earliest days, so we were not a welcoming community. And sadly, some of that lingers in pockets from generation to the next here in town. But the Berkeley that we live in today is a fantastic and truly wonderful community. And there's no done in this social project of growth. We must recognize and confront that which we find to be difficult or uncomfortable or embarrassing. And again, change does not come from somebody else over there. So let's not wait for somebody else over there, right? Change begins with me. Change begins with you. And I'd like to think that the best way to love America is to love actual Americans. Right? So please stay safe, stay socially responsible, wear a mask, and find ways that you can continue the journey toward a better Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So the library is back open for curbside delivery and, or curbside pickup and deliveries. You can request materials through the online catalog. So thank you so much to Director Church and his staff for making books available to the community again. No other reports from my other two committees, but I did just want to also echo Councilmember Baker in some ways to reflect that in July, we traditionally celebrate our freedoms and democracy. To me, this July, this one feels unique. After prolonged and necessary restrictions in the midst of a global pandemic, which will most likely lead to continued and perhaps increased restrictions, we are more aware than ever before of freedoms that many of us have taken for granted. As well, we are now more aware than ever before of freedoms that have been denied for far too long to the people of color in our society. I want to thank the residents who spoke tonight in support of people of color in our community. And I also want to thank Chris, the resident who advocated for expanding voting and registration access. This resolution and the resulting efforts from our city clerk's office make our democracy stronger. And finally, thank you to the officers, the dispatchers, the members of our public safety department who worked long hours over the holiday weekends to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I apologize. I got knocked off a couple times there, but in fact, I think the Berkeley Chamber and the Berkeley DDA are partnering for a downtown Berkeley scavenger hunt to encourage people to explore and support downtown Berkeley. The first four people to successfully complete the scavenger hunt will win a $25 gift card with downtown Berkeley merchant. So if you're interested, visit the Berkeley DDA website for official rules and clues. And that website, of course, is downtownberkeley.com. That's about all I have. I just want to say, support our local businesses and everybody stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten? Thank you, Mayor. A few items for the council and for the folks at home this evening. First, an update on the 12 Mile Road Project from Road Commission of Oakland County. People in that area have probably seen a flurry of activity as of late as concrete curbs and sidewalk have been installed, as well as the first base layer of asphalt has also gone in. Now, the utility work has been completed. Currently, the project's on course to open back up the block between Elwood and Greenfield, back to two-way traffic. It'd be one lane, one lane north, east and west, one lane on the south side, east, I'm sorry. There'll be a northbound, one northbound lane, one southbound lane opened up so that we can start traveling back and forth all over again. So that'll be, that'll be a welcome change, I know, for many of the businesses and many of our residents that regularly go back and forth along 12 Mile there. So more to come, but that'll be a nice threshold to see us get past on this. The second item I have this evening is a reminder to everybody that now that election season is upon us, signs, temporary signs that people like to put out in their yards to show their support of causes or candidates that they like. Those need to be, make sure that we place them on the private side of the sidewalk. We've seen a lot of those go in and each year we see them sort of sprout up in their city's right-of-way. We do enforce the rule that those need to be placed on the private side of the sidewalk. So instead of in between the sidewalk and the road, place it between the sidewalk and your home. And then display all signs that you want to within the confines of the ordinance, which are clearly found on our city's website. Last but not least, merely want to put in a plug for our boards and commissions. And just, we have vacancies available. We have some, a lot of really fun opportunities to serve. And we can't wait to see some new and returning faces on those boards and commissions. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hill also has an update on our progress on our marijuana applications. All right. I had you slotted in after the clerk today, but we'll make a shift here. We have our public policy assistant, Dan Hill, with us. Go ahead, Dan.
Good evening. Sorry to cut in line, Victoria. So first, to begin with the marijuana business license application. As all of you know, that application period closed on June 29th via City Hall Dropbox. And then anything that was postmarked on that day, we've also been accepting. As of this point, we've received 31 applications for various marijuana businesses to take those three slots that city council approved as part of the ordinance. Currently, Mr. Baumgarten, Ms. Luto, and myself have been conducting the completeness checks on all 31 applications and ensuring that we have a tight turnaround on those. Once they've resubmitted those items that will make their applications complete, we'll move into that merit scoring system that council also approved back in February. From there, staff is due to have all of those applications scored and the results released at the end of September. And then after that, we can move forward with the site plan and city council approval. To shift gears a little bit, the DIA, Detroit Institute of Arts, and the city of Berkeley are partnering this year to bring their very popular Inside Out program to Berkeley. Many may have noticed that the six pieces- may have noticed that the six pieces have already gone in around the city last week before the holiday. Coming up this Thursday, July 9th, at 6:00 p.m., we'll be doing a virtual ribbon cutting with the DIA, where we'll have some speakers from the DIA. Mr. Gavin will be there to speak, as well as the library director, Matt Church, and they'll be covering some of the pieces that have gone in and then where you can find all those pieces. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, for being with us this evening. And Ms. Mitchell, as we have an election coming up, I wanted to see if you have anything you'd like to add.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is our last meeting before the August 4th state primary election. I would like to remind all residents, every registered voter has the right to receive an absentee ballot. You may request an application to receive an absentee ballot by visiting berklymish.org/vote or calling 248-658-3310, or via email at clerk@berklymish.net. Once you receive your application, please indicate which elections you would like to receive an absentee ballot for. You may also indicate if you would like to be placed on the permanent absentee list. Sign the application, and please return to the city clerk's office via our secure Dropbox or mail. The absentee ballot process is safe and secure. Also, for those who would like to vote in person, all of our precincts will be open and operating as usual, with the exception, you'll definitely see plenty of PPE and social distancing practices being implemented at all the locations. We are also asking all residents who come to the polls to please wear a mask. If anyone is interested in tracking their applications or their ballots or their voter registrations, you can visit berklymish.org/vote to begin that tracking process. One final note, I do, would like to encourage all absentee voters, if you do have your ballot, number one, please make sure to vote within one party for all partisan sections of the ballot. You cannot bounce back and forth between Democrat and Republican. And also, if you have made your choices and you've completed your ballot, you've placed it in your envelope and signed the outside, please feel free to return that at any time. The earlier, the better. It does help out the clerk's office, so if you're confident with your selections, please return that to us. And that is all.
Thank you for those very important updates, Ms. Mitchell. We now move on to our attorney, Mr. Sterin. Been quiet this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I finally get my chance to talk. I'll be brief. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody had a happy holiday weekend and is staying cool this week. Dan Hill gave a good update on the marijuana licensing. There isn't really much pressing on the legal front these days. We did until the application deadline passed. Did spend a considerable amount of time working with Dan Hill and Aaron Schluto and manager Baumgartner, although not nearly as much as Dan, Aaron, and Matt spent, but dealing with numerous technical questions from applicants and ordinance interpretations and so on. It was really quite a, quite a learning process, and we spent a lot of time comparing notes with each other to make sure that we're all in agreement as to what the answers are. Though fortunately, we're past that now, and as Dan explained, we're into the next phase. So there's a lot more, a lot more work to do on the marijuana licensing, but I have been impressed with the efficient and effective way city staff's been dealing with it. It's extremely well planned and organized, and I think that's going to help us have a much smoother process than I think we were all very concerned about at the onset when we were trying to figure out how we're going to do this. So that's marijuana. Also, I don't have anything specific to report tonight to council, but council should expect that in the foreseeable future, we will be talking to you, giving you an update, a briefing on the basement flooding claims, there are developments with those cases. The attorneys are working through things. It's an evolving process, and anytime you have more than a dozen attorneys working on something, it's an extremely, an excruciating slow process. But stay tuned for that. When we have something concrete to report and discuss with you, we will. But after a lot of time where it seemed like we were spinning in the sand, there actually is progress toward resolution of those cases. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sterin. We've had guests come at Communications Night. Is there anybody else that I've missed? We got Mr. Hill, we got Ms. Mitchell. No, seeing nobody else? Okay. I just have a few items this evening. As we heard, Councilmember Baker mentioned earlier, how change begins, and one of the ways that in our democracy we can actually see change happen is through voting. And we've talked a lot today about coming out and voting and about accessibility to voting with a measure that we took on the agenda, but also from everything that Ms. Mitchell mentioned in her communication. So I certainly hope that we are able to, and we have record voter turnouts and the expanded absentee opportunity gives everybody that the availability to make their voices heard. And while we're doing that, as we also heard, we want to continue to stay safe. If we are coming out to vote or going out anywhere in public, we're wearing a mask and we are still social distancing. We are still doing well in the state of Michigan, but as we've seen across the country, some other states are not faring as well, and there are probably some reasons for that. But at any rate, we need to remain vigilant. We are not out of the woods by any stretch at this point, so we need to continue doing what we have been doing. And I want to put in a quick plug for the newsletter. I'm not sure what, how many folks actually read everything in there, but every month that thing comes out with tremendous updates from all of our department heads. And there's so much information. A lot of the things that we talked about today were covered in there, and there's also been a number of questions I've received from residents where I can just point them directly to the newsletter, and they can see the answers to all of those questions. So Tori does a great job, and I want to make sure that residents continue to see that and get all the updates. A final comment that I did not plan to make, but I'm going to make now. As it relates to our public safety departments and some comments that we heard from residents earlier, everybody is certainly entitled to their opinions, especially as it relates to symbols that may have had a meeting but have been co-opted by groups that are filled with bigotry and hate, and there may be some room for interpretation there. But the one thing that I want to make clear is that I'm not going to sit idly by when comments impugn the integrity and professionalism of our public safety department. The very department that protects us and serves all of us, everybody who lives in our community, everybody who travels through our community, we can certainly have discussions on the topics that were brought up, and we have had numerous conversations, I know, and extended dialogue today regarding that topic. But when it starts to become accusations that are not true and casting a broad shadow over our department, that is where I'm going to draw the line. I want to make that abundantly clear. With nothing else, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Support. Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henon. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turback?
Yes.
The July 6, 2020 meeting of the 38th Council is adjourned.